I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, first thing on the jan is to swear in of John Reagan for our new council member. So if you would stand up here, we will get you sworn in.
Just raise your right hand for me. Okay. I, Jonathan Reagan.
I, Jonathan Reagan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the state of Indiana.
And then I will faithfully.
Then I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And diligently.
And diligently.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Of Thorntown Town Council.
Of Thorntown Town Council.
District of this county.
District of this county.
Boom.
Boom.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
And according to the best of my ability.
On sign. Okay, sign right there. Yes. Okay, thank you. You may take your.
Thank you.
Come around here and have a seat. Okay, public comments and concerns? We have anything from the public?
I did turn up. Daniel, thank you. The U of 47 crosswalk, I know it's the state's problem, but I did walk up there after seeing a posting on Facebook about the danger of the crosswalk. And I went two different times and I've been flipped off twice and almost hit once. Surprisingly, the dump truck driver was very cautious. They saw me come in and they just slowed down way in advance. Everyone else thought I was in the way. It's an issue. And, you know, I'd be willing to try and take a lead in doing something about it, pushing pressure or whatever it takes, but I can just tell you it's an issue. We have a lot more people in town, a lot more traffic. And someone's already been hit. And it's a ticking time bomb. So I just want to put that concern out there.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Jason Padja. I represent four people from Indianapolis and Lafayette area. We're all like non-tech people in marketing, healthcare, and education who have been leveraging artificial intelligence really well in our businesses. And we're kind of looking to offer some free workshops in rural areas or places where that might be of benefit to people. So I can leave my information when I go. But if that's something that would interest you all in this town, just like a free two-hour workshop on a weekend, we would love to provide that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Department report reports, the APC.
Yeah. So the big item that was up with the APC was changing a residential area to light industrial. It's in regards to the self-storage center over there by the wood station. Is everyone familiar with that location? We should have gotten the letter coming. Okay. So we did allow that to change from residential to light industrial, which is where his self-storage business would fit in. And there were some additional notes on staff notes to make that happen, some more additional clearances, that type of thing. There was an issue in regards, and I don't want to conflate the two issues. We kind of got off track a little bit, which may be revealed in the notes. But on the APC side, we're only looking at going from residential to light industrial. It did conflate itself into some additional construction items, like the structure need to be secured down and those type of things. That's a matter of building codes, which we kind of overstepped. But they did put that in their application. They'd be floating units and, you know, from building codes perspective, they have to be affixed to the ground for them. So we did get those issues conflated, but that will have to be addressed. We may move forward to getting a permit. Does anyone have any questions on?
I, I thought we were at the comment section on that.
You did. Yes.
We just don't know what we talked about.
Oh, okay. Well, we put our, we put our recommendation on it.
You put it right. You, that's not what you said.
I'm sorry.
You said we did change it too.
I'm sorry, Paul, done.
All right.
Okay, maybe park board. Maybe the park board. Fire department.
So for year-to-date, we're up to 481, as we said on this morning. So 482 runs per year. Around 38% of the town, what we respond to. For notes, we did participate in the Halloween events, Halloween festivities uptown. Really good showing for our town for Halloween night. Last Monday, or the first Monday meeting, I brought up the funding request for the extracation. Hopefully you guys all got the packet of the spec sheets, what we're looking at purchasing. That is the proposal for it. I'd like to have approval to when the invoice comes that we get a check with. Pay for 50% of the township will pay either 50%.
What was it that, our 50%, what was it?
Twenty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-five fifty cents.
And you got the money in the lit fund to pay for it.
Yes, thank you.
So what, what do we have to do to okay that?
You can vote to approve it. Approve the expenditure from your lit fund. And I don't think you need, from what we were looking at, I don't think you need an additional appropriation for that. I think the money's already appropriated.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to pay for it in the lit fund?
I'll make a motion to let the fire department buy the unit. I need some lit fund.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
Home favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Okay.
Thank you. And I added some future stuff on here. I plan on using this template for future meetings. If there's something else you guys want to see or notice, then please let me know. Adjust if needed. So I had, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, police department.
The front door is becoming an issue. I, I spent about 20 minutes trying to get into it earlier. Just now spent another 10. Something's wrong with the lock. Inside of the lock. So I'd like to do that fix.
Okay. You know, you got a locksmith, you can get a hold of him.
Yeah, I'm sure. I, I don't need a new door or nothing. It's just.
New lock.
Probably a new lock or something.
Who, who we used before?
Oh, I just looked it up the other day.
It's the one in the door, right? Like this out here.
We do have somebody that handled it.
Do I? Do you have a father?
Door, uh, what if you're? You want to get a hold of him or do you want to get?
No, I can do it.
Okay. It's going water. You tell him.
Yeah, I don't have anything. Yeah.
We did, in fact, obtain some dirt from the gravel pit, thanks to Bruce. And we spread this to the fire department. So that trench that was down there last week was gone. Next city is in town. They're the service that will be trimming the trees. I spent probably four hours traveling with their regional director. I'm through town. Let me tell you, they're going to do a very extensive job. Maybe some of you have been contacted. If you have a orange dotted tree in your yard that trimming it, if you have a X on that tree, it's coming down. Now, they've put door handles out and they've knocked on many of your doors. So I'm very impressed with the fact that they've gone that way to communicate with people. And as it's been some years since we've had this level of tree trimming, it's going to be extensive. And nobody here for about a month. You may have seen them. I think they're still out in Westwood. Uh, we started leaf pickups. We're going to do what we can. You see, there's piles everywhere. We're cracking out the best we can. Just have to be patient. We'll get there, we always do. I didn't came to town this past week and they renewed our sewer use ordinance. They've made some changes to it. Ally has the changes. When she has that prepared, we'll have to have her read. I'm just a change, it's not the current thing, like with any other ordinance, so that it's in place for 26. And with that, we'll be enforcing resolutions. Okay.
You got anybody to replace him yet?
Matt?
Yeah.
He's going to replace most of them now.
That's what I told him.
Oh, I thought you told me that.
No, I was just going to tear up his resignation.
Well, it's not really a resignation. It's my term is, so I'm leaving at the end of my term. But apparently the only way out is to resign.
Okay. Then, oh, you got, Earl? Okay. Uh, Jeff?
Yeah, we've got a couple of things we need to kind of cover. I talked to Amy about some of this earlier. And he's here tonight. He and I met last week at the site. And we've got quotes for the tree removal now. Two quotes. One's a little bit longer path, the other one's a little bit wider. So when we decide which one's the better, one was $9,500, the other one was $12.5. Is that correct? Yeah. And so we're ready to move ahead with that. It's going to give us a quote also on laying some stone down in that path when we get it down. That's what we're not, we don't have yet. But I think Dan's happy with what has been put together here. And, and so now it's just a matter of moving ahead with it once we're ready. Amy, I don't know how you want to do that. If you just want to have, directly give the approval once we get the final numbers? If that's the best way to do it or?
Well, we could do, you could approve tonight and not to exceed. Did you say the more expensive is $12.5?
Yeah.
You could approve and not to exceed $12.5 for the?
Well, the $12.5 one's the one I'm leaning toward. Have you guys looked at that? You need to look at this.
You would do that one? He's recommending.
Hmm?
Dan recommends the 12, the longer path, the $12.5 one.
So do I.
Yeah. It's also with burning trees on site that the city will have us.
I think you could burn them on site, yeah.
But did you say the longer path?
Yeah. The longer one is the one that's the easiest one to get to the, the well side.
The other one did enter the north property line.
Yeah, it's less intrusive on the property on the next place. You have to use the longer path.
We did try to get a couple more quotes, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we decided not to respond.
So the white, did we get a call back? White line?
No, the yellow.
The yellow line. The white line is just a dimension from where the well was going to that real house.
Okay.
Where that starts is that one over to your left. Top starts there and then comes across to there. Yeah. And that, where that, where that first mark is, is at the bottom of the hill.
I'll make a motion to approve. Maybe ex-meeting's estimate not to exceed $12,500 for the removal of the trees.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
Home favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Okay, the other thing that I need to get in front of you is, and I'll kind of go through this, John, since you weren't here for some of this. The building inspector's job was ended in the last budget session. And so we've had a contractor working for us for about three weeks now, doing some building inspection. We didn't have a formal agreement with him up to this point in time, and we need to get that put in place when they get retroactive to his start date. We tried to figure out a way to do it on a per inspection basis or per hour basis, and it really wasn't working out because he was spending more of his time in consultation than he was actually doing inspections and preparing for building permits, which I think is, holds true to what Ben was doing as well. There was a lot of preparation leading up to a building permit, discussions back and forth. He's using his own vehicle, his own insurance. I mean, he's not requiring anything other than a, an amount. So my proposal would be to give him 50% roughly of what we were paying the building inspector before. Obviously, there's no benefits involved in that. And that would turn out to be about $600 a week. I'm open to discussion on that. We think it's better to try to do that. Amy kind of wanted me to get an hourly, and it, and it really just was difficult to get that done on such a short time period because we're only going to be using him now for next few weeks.
Have we got the funds to pay him that much?
There should be money left and going, going inspector through the end of this year. So that shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, there's still $24,000 in the building inspector line.
Okay.
Grumpy, if you want to entertain a motion, I'd suggest that you do it subject to drafting and negotiating the independent contractor agreement that we'll talk to him about. And then the council could authorize you to sign it so you could get that in place before the next meeting.
Okay.
It's a simple agreement that you'd used before for county.
Yeah.
So we just need to make a motion to?
Motion to approve subject to successful negotiations of the independent contractor agreement.
Okay. I'll make a motion to add a fact that we take a look at the independent contractor and decide upon what, we decide on what the payment will be.
I think we need to set a rate tonight. So if you need to make that part of your motion.
Okay, no more than $600 a week.
I'll second.
Home favor.
Aye.
Opposed.
I'll make a motion to allow Dave to sign the agreement once it's gone through legal review.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
Home favor.
Aye.
I wouldn't pay me to hash that over in the stairs.
Okay.
But that's all I got right now.
Okay. Have we got the? Mr. Cutter here. You see it? Which, who wants to do the talking about the APC?
You're here for backup or I'm here for backup? I'm here for backup. Well, like I, I talked to you at the, the last meeting a couple of weeks ago about Thorntown joining the APC with the county and how that can benefit you and the county. And also to, to help you understand that we do not override your rules in town. So whatever you set up, that's what we, that's what, whatever comes to us is presented to us and we follow your rules. We never override those, never have for the last 15-plus years, Jeff. It would be that we've, we've done this with Advance and it's worked out very well. And they're very happy with what we've got. So it's a great example of what we have with them and we want to do the same with you. That will give you one person to serve on that board, which will have to be appointed by the commissioners. So if that, that puts you a board member for someone from the town or the board, whoever you recommend to us, then we'll root for with that. But they have to live within the, the town limits.
And it can be a town council member or just a member of the public or?
It can be a council member on the plan commission. On the board zoning appeals, they can't be elected. So if you wanted to have one person do both, it couldn't be one of you all. But Advance, they currently have, who's on the plan?
Matt Johnson.
Yeah, Matt Johnson. He was a council person and he's now on both of, he's now on the plan commission. They are getting, and they just appointed somebody on the BCA. A non-elected person.
Okay.
So, and I didn't, I forgot to bring that in. Is it one person can serve on both boards or three, two different people? But it has to be confirmed. That has to be, gets to be confirmed.
But how many is on the board?
There's, yeah, seven on the plan commission and five on the board zoning appeals.
Okay.
And we all get one on each of those boards?
Yes. Same way that Advance, they, they get one on each one.
The reason for that is there's some other statutory criteria that has to be certain. There has to be a council member on there. That's Dustin Plunkett. There has to be a commissioner on there, it's Donnie. And we've also got the county surveyor on there. And county council appointment.
The school commissioner appointment.
School board, or school appointment.
School appointment, yeah. Which is currently Ted Brenner, who's the western building appointment. So the statute kind of dictates how everybody gets appointed.
Well, you know, when we were talking, last time, you were talking about, you didn't see any detractors to this. And I came up with one, okay? That's only, I wanted to discuss that and Amy's aware of it. But variances are detractor to me because if we have a BZA here and we have a variance in the BZA, it proves that we don't have any say-so. It's a done deal. Same thing with you guys. Somebody from Thorntown comes up with a request for a variance and it goes in front of everything. And then our guy doesn't, is not interested, doesn't want, he, he doesn't want to go through. But everybody else votes it in, we're done. The variance goes through. That's not, I don't want that. I mean, that's me. I don't want, we need to, we need to control our own variances because of, there've been alleys closed, which shouldn't have been. There's a, the other thing is there's people who want a variance about where they, say where an alley goes through and they want to build their building closer than our, our statutes show that they can build. Well, they asked for a variance. Well, you got to go down and look at it and see if you can get a fire truck through there or emergency vehicle. If, if in fact they built a building closer. And we're the ones that know that. You guys don't or the APC doesn't know we're letting. And I don't, other than that, I don't have a problem with joining. But there needs to be something written out, signed, saying that we have control over the variances somehow. I don't, however, however we can do that.
So how, how generally that would work is the planning director would give your input on that. Whether it's a variance or a rezoning or whatever the case may be. The planning director puts out a staff report and that's one of the first things she does is put down what the town's position is on it.
So the staff report will be distributed to the council members or could we?
It certainly could.
Okay.
She usually has them ready when the agenda comes out, which is usually Thursday before the Wednesday meeting, Thursday or Friday before. But she would be in contact with you initially, once, once the application is filed, to find out what the staff and the town's position is on it. Who does the same with that ones.
Is that in writing someplace?
It can be.
Yeah.
I mean, she just does it in her voice now. But it certainly can be.
We could do that, just in case there's another planning director, you know, that comes in just to make sure that that's the procedure.
Would, would we, if we had our own planning commission, our own BZA, which we can't fill, by the way, we, we still wouldn't have a choice then if we had our own BZA.
Right.
That's, that's very true.
The BZA, yeah.
Again, state law says that the, the BZA is a quasi-judicial agency unlike the plan commission. So the plan commission makes recommendations to you all for a rezoning. So it would be the exact same with the area plan commission. They make a recommendation on a rezone. You ultimately have to adopt it as the legislative body. The board of zoning appeals is a little bit different. They still have staff reports, you're supposed to follow the ordinances. There's specific statutory findings that they have to make, whether they grant or deny a variance. But state law is really clear that whether it's your BZA or the county's or any other BZA in the state, the appeal of that decision is not to you, but it's to court. So you have to go to court on a BZA decision. And it doesn't happen very often. I think in my, one of my 22 years with the plan commission, we've had two BZA decisions go to court. Both of those were appeals by somebody that didn't get what they wanted. So, and, and again, the BZA, you all would have an appointment. And I think same as with Advance. If it's a case in your jurisdiction, everybody defers to what they think, whoever your appointment is. So choose wisely.
Okay.
And just so you know, alleys still fall with us.
Right.
Alley closures. With the town.
They do, yeah.
They still, they do.
Vacating an alley wouldn't go through the plan commission or the BZA just.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a vacation, which is, has to come to you guys.
Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion to?
Any, you got anybody?
Anybody got a discussion about going to the county APC?
If this, we don't like the way it goes. We can get out anytime we want.
Get out anytime you want.
Just by ordinance.
Yeah. So the way it works is you would adopt an ordinance requesting you go into the plan commission. County commissioners adopt an ordinance and then it's finalized and we just come to you and we pick who you want on the plan commission.
Right. So where does that leave our current plan commission? I think we talked about this a little bit. I mean?
Well, there's a couple of different things. You could just disband them or have one of them serve as your appointment to the plan commission or BCA. Devin Lucier, county's planning director, had a good idea is if they wanted to still be involved, then we send all petitions to them and get their input on it before it comes to the county plan commission. So they would be in advisory, in, in advisory capacity.
Right.
Something that Amy and I talked about today was the possibility of making that not just an advisory APC, but possibly an advisory planning zoning so they could take a look at those variances too. If you wanted to do that before it goes to the BZA.
But they wouldn't be holding duplicate public hearings or anything. We would just dissolve now.
No, they would just meet and talk about a petition and, you know, if they wanted to have a petitioner come in and make a case to them, they could.
Yeah.
But you, you know, the public hearing would be occurring at the county plan commission or BZA.
So it would be less formal than we have now. You know, less notices and those kind of things.
And even at that time, if one of the county has their public hearing weekend, you can always send one of those members.
Oh, absolutely.
To a public hearing.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Their meeting is generally in the evening?
Yes, seven o'clock. The, or the plan commission is the first Wednesday of every month. And the BZA is normally the third Wednesday of the month. Sometimes it gets bumped for kind of fair or spring break or something. But it's normally the third Wednesday of each month.
Anybody want to make a motion to?
Yeah. I would make a motion for the county of Thorntown to join the county APC.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
Home favor.
Aye.
I will go ahead then. Sorry. No post.
Motion passes.
I'll go ahead and draft that ordinance then. So this will be formally adopted by you all by ordinance.
Okay. We'll have that by the next meeting?
Yep, I can do that.
You done, Donnie?
Yes, I am.
We're done? You got it worked on? We got the, uh, we got two snowbeds, uh, that have come in. One of them is Venus. And the other one's Lashley. I don't think we've used them before ever.
I know.
What'd you look at, where?
Insurance.
Yeah, I got the insurance on here. You didn't get me that right there.
This is stickers on.
I might know. Bub, you have those trees down tomorrow, won't you?
All about if it gets wet, we gotta go up and down that east, but we're gonna have to, you gotta probably have a spell in there.
I'd say put your brakes on a little sooner so you can slide down there.
Don't bother me any, but it might bother the, the property. That's what I'm, you need to figure out. The easement right there is, or the access.
You just have to do what you think you can get, get down through there. If we're gonna have to have stone, we'll have to have stone.
It won't take much on the hill, but then we need to look and, let's go take the building driveway, get the roll truck back there to drill it.
Dan, did you have anything you wanted to?
Uh, the only thing I've got is, uh, we've got a big date for the water treatment plant. We had a big event on February sixth. And so on the February sixteenth meeting, we'll have a recommendation on who to award it to. So I didn't permit, it's gonna go in next month. So everything's progressing to be completed by the end of twenty-sixth.
They've got the, they'll have the rest of the year to make it all happen?
Yes.
That, that's a completed project by then.
Something more.
Who, who is taking care of the financing? I mean.
Uh, that'll go through Chrome, Jared. So once we have bids in hand, uh, we'll have to discuss. Jared's aware of this. We've been keeping, uh, him updated. Uh, he'll have to, uh, look at, he's already done it. So whatever the number comes out to be, all he has to do is plug it into his spreadsheet and he'll come and talk to you guys also on the sixteenth.
Okay. How do they, how do they put a new plant in and keep the old plant running at the same time?
Very good question. Uh, we're on a hundred percent tonight.
Yeah, but we've been.
Saw how it went for a week.
You already called that.
Save up your bottled water. Now, um, we're gonna be, uh, building the new plant on the backside of that, uh, big concrete thing. We're not gonna touch the existing plant. So when the new plant's in operation, it's gonna be its turn of a bow and it'll be seamless. So boom, we're doing the new one. We're gonna take out the old ones, we're gonna demo everything out, but we're gonna do that until the new one's in operation.
Yeah, I've heard that seamless stuff before.
Well, it depends on the contractor. You know, how contractors, right?
We need some time to think about these snowbeds or we might go with anything tonight. What do you think, Bruce?
It may snow tomorrow.
What's our current, no contract run through?
I think it's over. It ran through October thirty-first. Yeah.
I guess we're trying it out. Well, I guess everybody needs to shovel.
Shovel some off.
We need to break them out loud.
I haven't had to do that yet.
Uh, I'm just reading. Venus snow removal, um.
Loader, two minutes backhoe, two hundred.
I see. Okay. Uh, Venus snow removals, um, he's got a price of two eighty an hour plus two hundred an hour, or two eighty for a loader, two hundred for a backhoe. Skid steer is one seventy-five, none of which I think anyone ever really uses those. Uh, single op, so, single op dump trucks, one sixty an hour. Pickup truck with blades, one fifty-five an hour. Salt is two seventy-five a ton. They, and they supply the run. So, uh, John Lastly Outdoor Solutions is, uh, he's got, not real sure which, one loader slash backhoe at two thirty-five an hour. Skid steer at one eighty-five an hour. Uh, no dump trucks, uh, he's got, he's got three listed. Uh, pickup trucks with blades, one twenty-five an hour. Salt spreader, ninety-five dollars an hour and then salt, two hundred dollars an hour. They're, they're pretty similar in price. Uh, one's cheaper on one, one's cheaper on the other.
And last year, last winter, we had Venus.
Mm-hmm, or the last two.
Last two years.
At least two, yeah.
And, uh, Venus has a lot more equipment than Lashley does. If, if we got into a nineteen seventy-eight blizzard. But, uh, I don't think there's, uh, that much difference in, in the money overall.
Well, neither. They've got, one, one's cheaper than the other, one's more expensive than the other. They're all pretty similar in price then.
Well, you shouldn't have, you shouldn't have read how much it was in front of Bub because his may have been cheaper than that. Tire?
I'm only a loser.
Oh.
I'm not very old, but I'm no, not an old either.
Um, I'll make a motion to accept Venus snow removal bid.
Second.
Second, on favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed. Venus is the winner. Okay.
I've got buckets. I've got buckets.
Yeah, I know. I skipped that before. Uh, okay. Anybody on the council got anything they want to discuss?
Nope.
Okay. You gotta sign payroll documents and APV registered. So that's it. Anybody, anybody out there in the audience got anything they want to add, detract? Okay, we're done besides signing.
Do you want to leave your information?
Yes.
I don't, I just, I could just tell you what my experience was. I mean, you could go out there like during the week and try. You, you get a kick out of it. You just walk out there and people could just look at you and flip you. I don't know. It's like, you gotta be kidding. It's, it's, it's common.